And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the Cameron Council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Tulley?
Here.
Counselor Selly?
Here.
Counselor Powers?
Here.
Counselor Scamperly? Counselor Stevenson? Counselor Trim? Counselor Weaver?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Counselor Trim is on her way, so she will be here. I'd like consensus of the council to excuse Counselor Scamperly, who was attending his son Marco swearing into the military today. Consensus of the council?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And then Counselor Stevenson is joining us remotely. Since it wasn't known at the time the agenda was prepared that she would be attending remotely, she may participate in the discussion and conversation on the issues we have on the agenda tonight, but she will not be able to vote on any action item. We do not have any presentations tonight. We have one public hearing regarding a proposed ordinance to license municipal property at the Dubisky Visitor Center to the Dirty Gringo. It is going to be Bill 61, and I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes to speak. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raised hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen and you will have five minutes to speak.
I do not see any hands raised.
I declare this public hearing closed. That brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes.
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Ruth Ann Badlam. I live at 1212 Washington Street here in Augsburg. I have lived here my entire life, 63 years, except for the few years that I went to college. I'm here today because I'm extremely frustrated. Almost daily, we have to endure the smell of the sewage from the sewage treatment plant. It comes and goes, sometimes lasting all day and into the evening. It really interferes with the quality of our life. We take great pride in our home. We've worked hard for 38 years to make it look nice, and we are proud of it. I've spoken to neighbors as far up as Hamilton Street on, I don't know what side of Washington it is, but it's the Riverside of Washington Street, and they all have the same complaint. And they're just as frustrated as myself and my family. Today, the smell was really intense. I had someone come to my house to drop off something for me, and he had to leave because he said he couldn't tolerate the smell. I invite any of you to come to my house. You're welcome to come onto my back deck. You can go into my backyard, even if we aren't there. It does come and go. If you come and you don't smell it, come back an hour later, I'm sure that you'll have it. It's nauseating. It's not fun. And we can't play in our backyard with our grandkids. We can't sit in our back deck and ask people to come over for a cookout because we never know when it's going to hit. I can't shut the windows. I don't have central air. So on days like this, we keep the windows open. Today, it was pretty intense for a couple hours. 1212 Washington Street, on the last house on the Riverside. I'm not the only one feeling this way because, as I said, I've talked to a lot of people, and I told them I was coming tonight, and they're all behind me. I would get their signatures if I needed to. Jennifer Stevenson has been to my house quite a few times. She has smelled the sewage plant. She agrees with me that it is terrible. She has been really good to us as far as explaining what's going on at the sewage treatment plant, the workings of the sewage treatment plant, and what has to be done to correct the smell. We understand all of that. But I'm here to voice my frustration, to let you know that it is bad. You know, it's really not good. We smell sewage most almost every day. Jennifer does have a, I text her every time we have the smell, which is pretty much daily, and she says she's keeping a graph to show everyone. I know that there's major repairs or fixes that have to be done there, but I just think that it's unfair to the citizens that have to smell it. When we're good citizens, we pay our taxes, we pay our sewer rates, we pay our, you know, we take care of our water rates. We do everything that we're supposed to do, and I don't think that I should have to endure the smell of it every day. Thank you for listening. I hope that you can help us.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Good evening. Wendy Hamilton, I live here in Augsburg and probably isn't a council meeting without me lately. I wanted to address some of the things that came out of the special meeting last week on, "We don't have a sewer problem, we have a storm problem." I've lived in many different places, beginning when I grew up on the St. Lawrence in Montreal. And I've come, it seems like, full circle and back here on the St. Lawrence. But I've lived in many different states and in many different communities who have had these challenges. And some of the things that were sort of a surprise to me when I first got here were sort of the behaviors of the community at large and based on some of our regulations. So, for instance, we have a flat-rate water system, which does not encourage or incentivize anybody to conserve water, which people might not think that, you know, that's an issue because we have plentiful drinking water, but water into the house is water out of the house. And that water is a burden on our sewers. So I think we talked about how, you know, you shouldn't do your laundry when it's raining. Well, it's the same thing. The more, you know, water that is put into that sewer system, the greater the burden. But, so, in many of the places that I've lived, one of which was I was on a septic system. And that makes you hyper-aware of what you're putting down your drain. So in these communities, they took a multi-pronged approach to addressing the burden on the storm sewer and just public awareness of why certain rules were in place. So it was an ongoing thing to educate the citizens as to why we did things the way we did them. One of their, in Ardmore, Pennsylvania, which is a historic town, the whole town is on the registry, and they have old, old infrastructure. But one of the things they did was put into place regulations regarding impervious versus porous surfaces. Because as we know, the more impervious the surface, the greater the runoff into the storm sewers. So anything impervious is anything above the ground that doesn't allow water to percolate naturally through the ground. So that's your decks, that's cement patios, that's asphalt driveways, that's anything that water cannot go through. And the reason they did that was, again, to alleviate the burden on the storm system itself. And they did quite a comprehensive regulation regarding it, based on different zoning in the city or in the town. But it helped. And when I look around Augsburg and see, and it's probably a lot of its municipal, the amount of parking lots and impervious surface, it's questionable. I know that there's grants out there that can help alleviate some of that. There's lots of remediation that we could do to lessen that burden. But there's also things that homeowners can do to lessen that burden. But explaining to people why you shouldn't blow your, you know, lawn debris into the street, it would be one. I drove tonight and I saw someone, you know, blowing their lawn cuttings into the street. That goes into the storm system. That creates problems. You can explain why, I hope in today's world, nobody's dumping bacon grease down the drain, but the grease and fat is in everything. So the more you can remove from going down the drain, the better. Because someone can talk to you about fatbergs. That's a technical, that is a technical term. And that's when fat coalesces with non-biodegradable stuff that's being flushed, like those famous flushable wet wipes that are, sure, they'll go down, but they don't degrade. And what they do is they combine with all the grease and the fat that's in that system to create blockages in our sewer system. And it coats the linings of our pipes. It reduces the diameter of the flow. I'm sure, I'm sure somebody can, I'm not the engineer, but these are the things that I was educated about in these other communities. And I would ask or hope that the city would take on that kind of community education program to help. I've got other suggestions, but I can talk to a counselor about it. But there's more to just what we talked about at that last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
Kathy, do we have any correspondence tonight?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda. That the claims as enumerated in General Fund Warrant 14-2024 in the amount of $174,867.63, and Library Warrant 14-2024 in the amount of $0, and Capital Fund Warrant 14-2024 in the amount of $3,698.75, and Community Development Fund Warrant number 14-2024 in the amount of $45, and Community Renewal Fund Warrant 14-2024 in the amount of $0, as audited, be in the same hereby or ordered paid, ISO move.
Second.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business, we read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
The first item is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement to operate the Dubisky Visitor Center concession to the Dirty Gringo.
Would anyone care to introduce this? I will second the motion. I note, though, as you read the resolution, that it does require a three-fourths vote of all members of the city council. That means it must have six affirmative votes. We only have five members who are eligible to vote this evening, and for that reason, I will make a motion to table this.
Second.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Tabled.
Our next item of business, we read by City Manager Fondacronus.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an easement agreement with Liberty Utilities, St. Lawrence Gas Corp. across a portion of the former railroad lands between the end of Monroe Avenue and the boundary line between the city and the town of Oswegachi for the purpose of providing natural gas service to several homes along the riverfront in the town of Oswegachi that have requested same.
Does anyone wish to introduce this? I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Sorry. Counselor Powers, second.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Your Honor, would you just please have someone speak to the number of utility easements we have so that the general public knows that this is a very common occurrence? I've had some questions regarding that.
I don't have that actual number. I don't, Andrea, would you have that information? We can certainly get that for you. I just don't have it right this moment.
Okay, so we'll research.
It doesn't have to be specific. I'm just saying that utility easements are a common occurrence in any municipality. That's, I just wanted to explain that, that we're not giving away anything that's not common to do to cooperate with utility companies and other municipalities.
Okay, but that's something that we can have staff research for more specific information to share in our next meeting. Thank you for raising that.
If I'm reading this correctly, Mayor, this is just giving them permission to put the pipeline across water intake property, right?
That's how I understand it.
That's how I read it.
Part of the old Diamond National.
Yes. Any other discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by, it was scheduled by City Manager Fondacronus.
A resolution to revise the city's existing backflow prevention valve program policy and rate of reimbursement.
Would anyone care to introduce?
I'll move that.
We have a second discussion? And perhaps an explanation first as to what the proposed changes are?
Certainly. I'll ask you to move your attention to the form on the third page of your packet entitled "Backflow Prevention Valve Program." The proposal does three things. Number one, it doubles the reimbursement amount from $250 to $500 flat. The city will continue to pay for the valve as it has in the past. It will continue to do so. In your next resolution, we will appropriate $25,000 towards this, all from the sewer fund, $10,000 from current appropriations, and $15,000 from fund balance in the sewer fund. And this policy also requires that any sun pumps be disconnected and verified as such. And we thought that it was reasonable to give a six-month deadline to do that disconnection. Management feels that doubling the reimbursement and capping the total appropriation amount of $25,000 is fair to residents and fiscally prudent, given the financial condition of the city at this time.
Any discussion?
I have one question, more than, not really too relevant, but I do a little research. I noticed that a lot of these backflow prevention valves have different levels of pressure that they're able to stand. And I'm just wondering if we have any idea how much pressure is being built up before this happens? And I'm assuming that whatever backflow preventer well that we provide, that we help them put in, is going to be strong enough to resist that backflow of whatever stormwater happens.
Certainly, that concern will be addressed. I'll make sure. I haven't had any indication that our valves have been failing, so I don't think that we can make any assumption other than the fact that the valves are working properly at the current pressure.
Can I ask a question that might be stupid? But why are we required?
So as I understand it, disconnecting the sun pumps helps take some of that water out of the sewer system. Andrea might be able to add a little bit more context to this. This is not my area of expertise, and Shane is on vacation this week. But as I understand it, having those connections will actually cause a backup in the basements.
I believe that it's already against city ordinance to have a sun pump connected to the sewer system. I know a lot of people in town that do, but I think it's, I think the city ordinance already prevents it.
I believe that is in the sewer use law.
That is in the law.
That's like a normal way to keep water out of your basement, isn't it? And sorry, I mean, this may be entirely like making it obvious that I'm not a very good homeowner. But isn't that like a normal way to keep water out of your basement?
I don't know. Last, I had mine replaced, and it drains out into my side yard and floods my driveway.
So that's?
Couldn't hook it up to the sewer system.
So you can pump it out into the street?
Freezing it up in the wintertime causes all kinds of punks out. It gets too cold.
Won't it end up in the sewer anyway?
No, that involves to get it to permeate through the ground, as opposed to get into the sewer.
Very heavy rainstorm, if your cellar is flooding, you're pumping it out into the street or under your yard, it may end up there anyway, but not on a regular basis.
I believe we're going to take a look at that law as well, and with possible amendments in it to some capacity, recognizing the fact that we didn't really enforce it in the beginning, quite frankly, for as long as I can remember. But obviously, you know, with the problems that many of our residents are having, I think everything's going to be taken a broader look at as far as water runoff and wastewater treatment plan along with the issues with stormwater. As Ms. Hamilton brought up, you know, regarding education of that. And so there's going to be a lot more information coming forward from this, I believe. And I believe that review of that law will be reviewed as well.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I have a little echo. I don't mean to speak in front of someone. So that is actually, if I remember correctly, a state law that you can't do that. So it's not just a local law. It is in our regulation because it is a state law that we can't introduce stormwater from a household into the system. So they can have a sun pump. It just can't go into their sewer line. So they have to make other means. Some people put dry wells in. Some people run it outside. There's all kinds of opportunities. It's most convenient and probably most secure to do it into the sewer line, but it is part of the issue of the stormwater runoff that we are having with the city.
But we can regulate the ability to have a sun pump?
They can have a sun pump. They just can't put it into the sewer line.
Andrea, we can eventually, with the law that states they can't have a sun pump now, the local law, correct? Or state laws?
The sun pumps are not allowed to connect into where we have a combined system. There are areas that say where we have a separate system.
You know, the combined system. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this is looking to disconnect some pumps that are presently connected to the combined sanitary storm sewers. So if you're connected to a dedicated storm, that's a different issue.
Right.
That's a different scenario. Let me retract issue. It's not really an issue. It's an issue when it's combined, when you are pumping storm water, which is essentially groundwater that would otherwise be going into your basement, to Counselor Trim's point. But that's going into the combined storm sewer, which is ultimately going into the plant, being treated. That's all the issues that were talked about by Carrie Tuttle at the last meeting that we're trying to avoid. And those are some of the more low-hanging fruit that we can start to address on a quicker basis to just more expeditiously get storm water out of our combined system.
So until it's fixed, we have to obviously regulate, monitor the sun pumps. Yeah, all right, okay, very good.
Any other discussion? I would just offer a comment that I believe one of the reasons for this recommendation is the recognition by staff, and I'm anticipating the support by council, that the cost to install and purchase these backflow valves has increased over time. So we're recognizing that. But also recognizing our budgetary constraints, we're not in a position to be able to fund the entire cost of backflow valve installation, which I believe the city of Augsburg is rather unique in offering such a benefit, you know, canvassing municipalities in the North Country. I don't think anybody else does it. You know, so I think it's something that needs to be, to inform the public about. So with that, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
And our next item of business, we read by City Controller Angela Greck.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to modify the sewer fund budget necessary to appropriate money for the sewer backflow grant reimbursement program established for property owners within the city of Augsburg.
Would someone care to introduce?
I'll move that.
Second.
Moving second, is there any discussion? Again, the city manager gave a brief discussion of this in discussing the prior resolution, where in effect, we're reducing the anticipated expense, materials, and supplies, and covering the balance with appropriated fund balance.
Yes, correct.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business, we read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2024 Department of State Smart Growth Zoning Grant.
Would someone care to introduce this?
A second.
Andrea, could you go through the highlights of this resolution, please?
This is a, the city has applied for this in the past. We applied in 2022, but we did not receive funding. This is a program through the Department of State. So it's due, it's through the consolidated funding application due July 31st that would financially support the update of the city's zoning code. So we would be applying for $75,000, and the required match would be $7,500. If awarded, the 2025 budget would need to allocate $7,500 out of the planning consultant line, which is a 8020.515.
Questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
That brings us to old businesses. Does anyone have any old business tonight?
Your Honor, I have one item.
Yes.
Thank you. To speak to Ruth Ann Badlam's issue, I have been monitoring this. I've been visiting the neighborhood regularly at the request of the neighbors. I've spoken to many individuals other than Ruth Ann. I did get some explanation, as did council, to why this is happening and how it's happening. But in following the occurrences of it, it seems to happen even more frequently than we're having heavier rain episodes or even light rain episodes. And I just would like to revisit this with the engineer and with Dank to see if there's any other solutions that they can at least lessen the impact of this. Because it is quite nauseating, and it is quite strong, and it is affecting both sides of much of Washington Street, and even filtering beyond that. So I would just like to revisit with the engineers and Dank to see if there's anything additional that can be done.
Okay, so we'll make that request of the city manager to follow up?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Any other old business? Brings us to new businesses. Does anyone have any new businesses this evening? Seeing none, brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have items for discussion this evening?
I have one.
Yes.
As much as I can do as far as action on it, but I've received several complaints about needles and drug paraphernalia being left in people's yards. And I'd just like to encourage, not that Mark's department needs any more business, but I'd encourage them to contact the PD rather than trying to clean it up themselves if they come across that.
Thank you for raising this. Anyone else?
Your Honor, just for full transparency, I did want to disclose that I had a family member that had a medical emergency at 4:30 this afternoon. So I did fully plan on being at the meeting, and I apologize to the Dirty Gringo for not being able to be there to take action. And I thank you for allowing me to participate. But everyone is fine. Everything is good. But I just wanted to let everyone know that. Thank you.
Good news to hear, Counselor Stevenson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have a couple of items to share with council and the public. The first is a statement regarding the July 18th prison closure announcement by the New York State Department of Corrections and Community Supervision. Augsburg City Council, thanks Governor Capp- Augsburg City Council, thanks Governor Kathy Hochul and the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision Commissioner Daniel Marticello and their respective administrations for recognizing the excellent work by all administrators, security and civilian staff at Riverview Correctional Facility in its implementation of the doc's mission statement, that being to provide sound rehabilitation models for incarcerated individuals through the many educational and vocational programs with a high degree of professionalism, integrity and efficiency. Augsburg City Council also expresses its appreciation for the continuing support of North Country prisons, and in particular, Riverview Correctional Facility by New York State Senator Mark Walcick and New York State Assemblyman Scott Gray. Councillor Powers, Councillor Scamperly, City Manager Fonda Cronus, and I will continue to serve on the St. Lawrence County Prison Task Force as it continues its efforts to develop ideas for protecting and advocating for Governor Correctional Facility and Riverview Correctional Facility. Next, the city of Augsburg is pleased to have been selected as the location for the St. Lawrence County Joseph P. Dwyer Veterans Peer Support Project, whose office celebrated its opening on July fifteenth. We are hopeful that veterans living in our county will take advantage of the services this project provides for their benefit. The program provides one-on-one, peer-to-peer counseling that is recognized for providing a successful avenue to help veterans transition and reintegrate back into civilian life. We wish the county's project director, Daniel Horton, and his team the best in their efforts to provide this valuable service to St. Lawrence County veterans. And then, third, um, Seaway Festival, I think, is off to a great start this past weekend. I encourage our citizens and our visiting guests to take advantage of and enjoy the many activities scheduled this week through the hard work of the volunteers of the Seaway Festival Committee. That brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you will have two minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have two minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
We do not have a need for executive session tonight, so I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.